This time I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome everyone here this evening. A special welcome to our Director of Administrative Services, who's had his first city council meeting in that role. Welcome E.J. Moberg. So, thank you. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, the first item on the agenda is to consider the resolution declaring a vacancy. Obviously, we mourn the loss. So, Councilmember Don Edblum, Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to city charter and state statute, the city of Marshall, the city council is being asked to declare the unexpired term. A former councilmember, Edblum, has Ward 1 seat vacant. So, that is the resolution that is before you this evening.
And later in the agenda, we will discuss having a special election to fill that seat. I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, with great sadness, I move the resolution declaring the emergency.
Vacancy.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What the same old second then.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Any discussion on that motion? Now, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We note for the record, in addition to the vacancy of this councilmember, Edblum, we also had two members absent. So, we do have four remaining councilmembers, as well as myself, that are here. So, that does constitute a quorum of the council. Agenda item number two, consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on February 22 of this year. The council has the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. I should say, minutes don't require discussion, so that's why I always move to a vote right away. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to a public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is on general obligation bonds, Series 2022A. We will conduct a public hearing, and then, following the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution approving the property tax abatement to finance certain property improvements in the city. Sharon, are you going to start with this?
I certainly can. We do have on hand our finance consultant on bonding, Terry Heaton from Baker Tilly. This was previously presented in our CIP plan late in 2021, and we are now taking the next steps in order to bring funding for the specific projects. So, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly turn it over to Terry to give further background.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, there are three items on the agenda that have to do with getting authority or doing the right process so that you have the authority to issue bonds at your next city council meeting. And there's about a $2.9 million bond issue that will be coming. And as is customary, Marshall combines, the city combines two or three or four different types of bonds together in one issue in order to save issuance costs. But within those components, they all need separate authority in order to issue by type. And the first of these is the abatement hearing that is before us. This component of the bond issue is for $575,000 in principal for the Rose and Addison parking lot resurface. And so, this particular type of improvement requires an abatement in order to approve for the abatement bonds. And what we have to do is show that, or provide properties who benefit, whose city's share of the taxes equal the annual principal payment, and in total, over the timeframe, which is 10 years, the total percentage of the city's taxes would equal the principal of 575,000. We have done that, and the back of the resolution, the pin numbers for those properties are listed. And so, it's a benefit saying that because of, you know, the finding is because there, it would increase traffic, and it provides a benefit overall to the city, that it's a general benefit, not like an assessment where specifically has to be proven, you know, shown to benefit that property. So, that meets this test. What's important is, once we've approved the abatement and the bonds are sold, the way we pay for use this abatement is that the levy for this portion, the portion of the bonds, is spread to all property taxes. These properties are not treated any differently than any other property within the city. It is really just used for the purposes of proving that you have enough properties to benefit. So, these are properties nearby the Rose and Addison downtown parking lot adjacent to West Lyon Street that our team has helped with city staff to come up for the properties. And that is the background for this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Terry as part of the public hearing, or any public input on this issue as part of the public hearing? Any questions from the council?
The only question I have, or clarification, it must be approved by a majority vote, that the majority of the council or the majority of the quorum?
I believe that's the majority of the quorum present at the time of the meeting.
We actually...
So, I don't know who did this memo and if it was prior to whatever happened in terms of terms, but the charter states, our charter states, that it needs to, resolutions and ordinances need to be approved by the affirmative of the quorum, which would indicate we need four, four yeas to pass this. So, it is more strict than statute. Our charter is more strict than statute, and this is Bonding Council, who has stated that that is what we need in affirmative of the quorum.
And the, good question, because there's several items that will be applicable to that question. So, good question. Now, in reality, you know, with six people on the council, it does take four anyway. So, in this case, because it's a, it's a bond or ordinance, all four have to vote in affirmative, otherwise it's not going to pass.
But the difference, then, in what you stated is that it could be one of the four that are present here that under six could vote no, and it would still pass. So, at some point in time, if we think that this is a fail tonight, but not a fail later, maybe we would move to...
That could be an alternate motion if, in that case, yes.
Yep.
Well, it's just a question I'm asking. The parking lots need to be improved. In my mind, it's something that we need to do. I just want to make sure it's out there. What, I know we've talked about majority and two-thirds, and so, it's out there what the vote is and what's going on.
Good clarification. You know, when we get to the, when we entertain a motion to close the public hearing, it only takes three there, because...
Right.
So, okay. Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Then we'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll now consider the resolution that would approve the property tax abatement to finance this public improvement.
I would make that motion to approve this. This is a long time coming, so I would make the motion to approve this public...
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Now, discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass unanimously of those present. We'll move then to agenda item number four. It's a similar discussion, general obligation bonds, 2022A. Once again, we will conduct a public hearing. Following the closing of the public hearing, we will consider the resolution. Sharon, once again.
Yeah, I guess we'll have Terry Heaton give some background on this particular bond.
Okay, Terry?
As you said, similar to the first item, all part of the same bond. In the case of this general obligation reconstruction bonds, if you don't have at least 20% of the projects assessed, then you, the other option is to do a reconstruction bond. And in order to do that, as long as the city has a five-year plan, which includes this item that we're talking about bonding for in the plan, which it does, the reconstruction plan that's been created, it shows up in year 2022, and that you state in the resolution a maximum amount to be bonded for, and it does, it states $400,000. So, if the resolution is adopted this evening after the hearing, and there is a 30-day reverse referendum that expires, then the city has the authorization then to issue bonds for this component of the bonds.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Is there any input as part of this public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to the, consider the resolution that would approve the five-year reconstruction, street reconstruction plan and the issuance of general obligation street reconstruction Questions about the resolution?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. Looking forward to item six in the consent agenda. Would that modification need to be done previous to this, or is it okay to have that just because it's a continuum of the redevelopment? Oh, I'm sorry, for project one. Never mind, never mind. Sorry.
Okay. Any other input or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass unanimously of the four present. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda this evening. They include the introduction of the ordinance, meaning Chapter 62 of the city code, which is the access management or driveway ordinance. Consider the resolution calling for a public hearing on the modification of the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number one, and to consider the approval of the bills and the project payment. Any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of a separate discussion?
Yeah, number five pulled.
Any other item? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda, which is six and seven.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. Okay. Agenda item number five, Jim.
The reason I have this pulled is we're making clarification for the public that's listening. We're not trying to limit the size of your driveway. We're trying to limit the size of the approach to your driveway, which is actually on the road right of way. Correct when I say that, Jason?
Yes, it's in city right of way.
In the city right of way. So, we're not trying to limit anything done on private property. It's on the road right of way. I just make that clarification, so when the public hearing comes, people can, you know, understand that.
Very good. Thank you.
Probably could add in on our discussion that we had, Jim, was the, also to bring up whether driveway is asphalt or...
Concrete. Right now, the ordinance reads they have to be concrete, and we want to bring up the discussion of asphalt or concrete as we look at costs and stuff, so...
We wanted to have that discussion in council after, you know, as part of the public hearing.
Yep. It's just something for the public to take a good look at and, you know, because it doesn't affect their property, but it's not on their property.
Any other questions about this?
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John to call for the public hearing on the, well, excuse me, the introduction of the ordinance, for the driveway ordinance. That was what your motion is.
Correct.
Okay. Now, discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number eight, this general obligation bonds, Series 2022A. We have a resolution authorizing the issuance of the general obligation airport bonds. Sharon or Terry, do you have anything that you want to present at this time?
We'll let Terry present.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, we have issued, again, the airport is a small portion of the total bonds, it's $70,000. But in, along with the Airport Act, it actually requires a special resolution to be adopted. And it basically says that the improvements are used for the airport, and that it requires a special vote that is sometimes higher than a regular vote for the bonds. Bonds are usually just a majority, and so, we have sometimes done this the same evening. But knowing that at the next council meeting, you'll also be having folks absent, we decided to bring this ahead of the bond issue. It's usually done the same night of, and basically saying that you're not paying for more, a big chunk of this, we're saying that most of it is being paid from, I have to grab my notes so I don't say things like "big chunk." I want to get back here. Yeah, so that we're noting that the portion that is being paid for by federal funds versus local. We've gone through these resolutions. Oh, here it is. We looked at this, the passenger facility charges and other revenues are at least 20% of the debt service on this portion is funded in part by state or local or federal grants, and it does not exceed more than 25% of the state or federal grants. And so, to that extent, you've met all of that criteria. The last thing that is needed is you need a vote of not less than 60% of the members for this resolution. And we, I believe, Sharon, we received feedback from Sophia Leakey, bond counsel, that that would be four votes on this resolution as well.
Correct. We are, my understanding from her legal response is that we're considering it, the council, to have six members, so we would need four for the 60%.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. The questions? If not, is there a motion for the resolution?
I so move.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then, well, first off, before we move on, the, that it really is the final finance issue. So, thank you to the finance staff, and thank you to the, our Public Works Engineering staff to bring these projects to the point that they can be considered for funding. So, thank you to the staff. We'll move then to agenda item number nine, consider the approval to prepare and submit a Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Grant. I'll call on Preston Stensrud, our park superintendent, to present this. And again, the request is the authorization to submit the grant.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, we're here tonight just to get council support to apply for the grant. The grant isn't due until March 31st. There's actually a formal resolution. We'll have to come back to the 22nd meeting that we'd probably just put in the consent agenda if you guys approve to move forward with this. But we have applied for the outdoor recreation grant before. We haven't been successful, but we're hoping we can change that outcome with this application process. So, just to give a little background, a couple of years ago, we started talking about adding an inclusive playground somewhere in Marshall. At that time, the goal was to add one large inclusive playground somewhere, and that's kind of right when COVID hit and grants weren't as, being dispersed as much. So, we kind of went back to the drawing board. And last year, we implemented the cultivating the best in play, where we kind of thought we'd be better off to start adding inclusive components to each park instead of focusing all in one park. So, last year, we did Legion Field. Those were completed in November, and we've got lots of positive feedback on those. It's got the inclusive merry-go-round, and then it's got a roller table. So, these three items that are pictured in the council packet are different than those three. That way, we get uniqueness at every park. And with that, you know, the process would include buying these three pieces of equipment, putting in synthetic turf, which is fully accessible and antimicrobial, and then pouring like cement sidewalk around. It'll be right by the large playground at Independence. We're waiting for our safety zone plan from the playground company to see if it'll fit in the playground. Otherwise, we'll move it right outside and hook up to the new bike trail once that's complete. So, just kind of looking for support to move forward. We're estimating right around $60,000 to do the whole project. Last year, we did two pieces, and this would be three, a little larger since Independence is a little bit heavier used, and we have those funds in the park development accounts. We're not asking for any, like, tax levy dollars. And once we move forward, I try and start seeking out some fundraising and donations also, which would bring that $30,000 share down likely, so...
Well, thank you, Preston. And I, Legion Field, accessible playground installations really did turn out nice for the community. Questions for Preston?
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. I know at one time, we kind of had a thought that there would be one playground totally dedicated as inclusive, and I think you found out from some of your peers and suppliers that the new trend is to incorporate inclusive pieces of equipment into each playground versus having one multimillion-dollar inclusive playground. If you want to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, this is kind of a new, for our size of community, we're kind of a little bit ahead of the curve, I'll call it, in what these little pop-up components. It's kind of started in the metro, more on the East Coast, like the Philadelphia and Boston, where they're putting these pieces in. And turf is pretty new. A lot of people do pour it in place, rubber, but turf is a lot more economical. So, yes, this, to be more welcoming, it's better to be welcoming everywhere versus focusing on being welcoming at one park, because maybe you live on the other side of town, and it's not easy for you to get there. So, this way, we kind of add new inclusion to each and every park. It's just going to take time to get there versus kind of putting all of our eggs in one basket, and so...
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move approval to prepare and submit a Minnesota DNR outdoor recreation grant.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, well, when do you think we'll know the outcome of the grant?
I want to say it's May or June, I think.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 10, consider the resolution reestablishing the voting precincts, wards, and polling locations. As we all know, following the 2020 census, that voting areas need to either be reaffirmed, that they're not changing, or if there is redistricting, that that be accomplished before the next special or general election. So, this was considered by our legislative ordinance, who studied the current results of the census. Kyle, I'll call on you to present the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Kyle Box, city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you had mentioned, LNO did hear this last Tuesday, provided the background, or we discussed the background material provided in the memo, along with three additional options. Now, just to a little more insight, after review of our 2020 census redistricting data, we believe that the accuracy of the census, specifically to track 3605, which overlaps with our Ward 1 voting district, is undercounted. This track includes SMSU and a large amount of the rental housing that was, that we believe was unoccupied due to the timing of COVID-19. It's staff's opinion that with the current data provided by the Census Bureau for the city of Marshall, the city of Marshall will not need to redistrict precincts or wards, even with the, with what our belief is an inaccurate population count located in Ward 1. Staff met with LNO on March 1st to discuss three options. We presented three options. The first option was to reestablish the city of Marshall precincts and wards, recommending no changes to our current voting boundaries. Option two was to move 89 people from, approximately 89 people from Ward 3 to Ward 1, and option three was to move approximately 220 people from Ward 3 to Ward 1. This specific change would reestablish neighborhoods and making ward lines to be more easily identifiable, largely following East College Drive. Options two and three were presented to the LNO committee as a result of the census results, the redistricting results. Our counterparts, counterparts at Lyon County do not have the ability to remain or keep their same voting districts if the city of Marshall reestablishes the same boundaries. So, that's why options two and three were presented. They were, options were discussed with Lyon County staff at the time to minimize the impact of redistricting by redrawing precinct and ward lines within Marshall's Ward 1 and Ward 3. There was much discussion by the LNO committee, largely between options three and options one, and then the LNO committee did unanimously, unanimously approve option one to reestablish the city of Marshall precincts and wards with no changes to our voting districts. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any input from the Legislative Ordinance Committee?
I would say we did, Kyle said, we had quite a bit of discussion on this. Looked at each of the options, and also the fact that according to the criteria, we, as the numbers stood in the census, we were not required to make a change. And a little discussion, we do believe, or at least would say, in my opinion, I do believe that the numbers are not correct because of the timing that occurred just with COVID. So, that was part of my thoughts on leaving it as is. Option three was a good suggestion because it seemed to straighten out some lines, I would say, and maybe make it a little bit more logical where divide between Ward 3 and Ward 1. But it, in looking at the, the way the ordinance, I guess, suggestions or whatever made to try to balance the numbers with the present census, we would not have accomplished that. And so, there in light of not wanting to give the impression of any kind of gerrymandering or whatever, and the fact that we did not make any changes, we didn't have to make any changes to the present wards, came to the conclusion that was best just to leave it the way it was and keep the precincts as they are, and...
So, John covered it quite well unanimously, we decided to keep it the way it was.
So John covered it quite well that unanimously we decided to keep it the way it was.
Good. Well, and as John, as you presented, there's no requirement because it's less than a 10% overall change. And when you really look at the, at the numbers, had the count been accurate, and the reason it likely was not accurate is because of the closure of the SMSU dormitories on, on March 18th or thereabouts, so April 1 census day, it was a different number that the population at SMSU on campus was reported to the Census Bureau at their request in the group quarters report, just like residents of nursing homes and jails that they're counted under a group quarters, and the SMSU dorm was reported that way. And there was 385 people that were reported as living in the dorms. On April 1st, there was a contact to SMSU from U.S. Census, give us the number of the people who are there today. And that number was 49. The, and they were likely international students who, you know, basically had no place to go. And we know that those students returned to the dormitories, so that absence was temporary. So I think that's one of the basis of our appeal. In addition to that, there's roughly 400 students that live off-campus. So you factor both that difference between 385 minus 49 plus 400, and the numbers are almost identical, so. Which again, justifies the, or the reason of having roughly equal number of people in each of the voting areas. Longer explanation than what you needed, right? Any other input, any other discussion? If not, is there a motion on the recommendation from the Legislative Ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Just quickly to add that this resolution will also reestablish our current polling locations as well. So we're not recommending any changes for those.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle, for that. Any other input? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion to reestablish the district's wards.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting, and that motion passes. Agenda item number 12, or excuse me, Agenda Item Number 11, Consider the Resolution Declaring a Special Election. Obviously, we declared the vacancy, and the next available uniform election date, Kyle, is August 9th. I'll let Kyle, City Clerk, provide this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, the council did declare former council member Ed Blooms Ward 1 seat vacant. The unexpired term is longer than 180 days. By, according to our charter, that vacancy shall be filled by a special election within that area to be represented. Due to a redistricting year, municipalities are further limited to when a special election can be held. And as you had mentioned, the earliest next available election date is August 9th, which is state primary day. After review and confirmation from the Minnesota Secretary of State's office and with the Director of Administrative Services, we are recommending that the council move forward to hold that special election in conjunction with the state primary election on Tuesday, August 9th. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Filing period would be when?
That filing period would be May 17th through May 31st.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Kyle? If not, is there a motion declaring the special election?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 12. This is project on Lyon Street, College of First, Reconstruction Project. We have a resolution that would receive the feasibility report and call for a hearing on this improvement. Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. So this project is a one-block reconstruction of West Lyon adjacent to Block 11. As the council is aware, the EDA has been working with the developer for the development of that block, and I think there's some pending actions coming at future council meetings regarding that development to ensure that the city would be in a good position to deliver a project on this block, to reconstruct the street and the utilities, and ensure that it blends well with the Block 11 development and provides, provides for what they need. We did push this project off. We would have otherwise done it last year, but seeing that the Block 11 development is moving forward, we've gone ahead and finished the feasibility report, and we're presenting that to you tonight. In the feasibility report, you'll note that our cost estimate is $432,000, including contingency and engineering costs. The project would be proposed to be assessed per our current policy, and at this point in time, staff is recommending concrete surfacing. If there are any questions about anything in the feasibility report, I'd be happy to answer them. The action here is to receive the report and call for a hearing on the improvement. That hearing would occur on April 12th, and we would notify as needed.
Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this PINT has spent a lot of time talking about this project, and the recommendation for concrete as part of this is, is with the way the parking arrangement is proposed, there's not going to be a conventional gutter. There'll be some changes in grade for storm flow that would be by the back of the vehicles if they're parked. And so part of that reason, rather than having concrete to asphalt to concrete transitions, it just makes more sense to have the entire stretch being done with concrete, so. But it has been exhaustively reviewed and discussed at PINT, and we're recommending to move forward. It's not a unanimous push necessarily, but the majority on PINT did recommend that we move it forward.
Other questions or input?
Jason, could you, you know, can I, a quick explanation of the drainage that, you know, the back of the cars, and so it's going to be more of a dip in that part of the road?
Yeah, so you can think about similar to Fourth Street, just over here near our building, where the parking lanes tip away in, in towards the road, and then there's a valley gutter for drainage down near the back of the cars. This would be similar to that. We think it blends well with the different curb heights on this project, and it really makes everything tie together nicely. It also kind of does a nice job of distinguishing the travel lanes from the parking lanes. I think it'll look nice when we're done. It does fit really well. One note about the feasibility report, it does say six-inch concrete. In further discussions, we'll likely move to seven inches for the through lanes and six inches for the parking lanes, but that's just a, kind of a design thing.
So is the slope going to be kind of to both ends or one end?
The slope, so the, the street drains from College Drive down to First, and then the Block 11 side will drain away from Block 11 down to that valley gutter, and the two through lanes will be crowned where they, they both drain each direction. And the parking lane on the, I'll call it plan north side on the top of the page, that will drain down towards the curb like we typically do. The thing about the drainage away in that parking lane down toward the back of the vehicles is it will be more gentle than the one on Fourth Street. That one's quite steep in some spots.
Yeah, I'd say notice over here, you end up with some, especially weather like now, you get some slush holes that, you know, water's not moving, so this would actually be further back, so people aren't necessarily stepping out into the water.
Yeah, it'll be a little more gentle as well, so hopefully we don't have quite as much built-up ice and snowpack in there. But that's, that is a little bit of an issue where you have those grade changes. It's, it's kind of hard to avoid.
Yeah, it just doesn't all thaw at the same time, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Jason. I'd entertain a motion on accepting the feasibility report and calling for a hearing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 13, the snow removal equipment and aircraft rescue firefighting equipment. We have an agreement for the transfer of the airport federal entitlement funding and the, authorize the execution of the filing for the appropriate FAA form. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a little bit of a procedural item, I would say. So the city council has already elected to award the design contract to TKDA, or at least the pre-scoping contract for the snow removal and maintenance building. It's a project on our capital improvement plan to find, find the city some more storage space out there for our equipment, so we, we are able to get out of some rentable spaces that we're in right now. So to do this and to fund this building, we've identified these FAA entitlement funds as one of the three or four funding sources on the project and one of the primary funding sources. We receive $150,000 annually in entitlement funding. You can bank up to four years of that funding for a total of $600,000. We are at that limit. And last year, we transferred $150,000 to, I believe it was Dodge City?
Dodge Center, yeah.
Dodge Center. This year, we'll be transferring $150,000 to the city of Wasika. And the, the purpose of the agreement is to ensure that in the proper year, which I believe is 2023, they would transfer the funds back to us, one, one year of their entitlements for us to use. So this allows us to effectively have more FAA funds than $600,000 for use. So it really gives us a lot of flexibility. We would recommend to approve the agreement, and with that approval, we'll work with TKDA to ensure that this gets done.
Very good.
And this was also reviewed by the Airport Commission, and they recommend approval.
Very good. Any other questions?
The only question I have is, is per se, what happens if Dodge Center decides not to send their money back?
I don't know if that would happen or if it ever has happened. I don't have a great answer for you, other than we put our trust in TKDA for the advice to do this, and they have a very good track record of it working out. I think that, I don't worry about that.
And the other side of that, Jim, is if, if we didn't do the loan, we don't get the money anyway. So they're stealing money we wouldn't have. Stealing might be a strong word, but not, I mean, that's kind of like stealing.
And Dennis, I mean, if they don't, is there anything, I'm not saying they will. Just as you loan, you know, as a business person, I think, well, what happens if it doesn't come back? Is there legally something we can do?
I mean, you can enforce the agreement, the contract that says that they will return it in a certain year. And I was just going to point out, I think there needs to be just a little clerical change on the number on the agreement, which appears on page 84. It, you know, it's, it looks to me it could be interpreted as 150 million.
Well, I'd say.
About 150,000. Yeah, we made the same correction a year ago when we transferred the funds to Dodge Center to change the numerical.
And I'm, I'm assuming that they'll do it, but you know, you.
Well, and I think the form, the FAA form talks about this because this is an authorized or an allowed function, so I've, I've got a feeling that there might be some recourse by them not getting their 150 that they should send us in violation of the agreement on the form. Because this is a practice that happens a lot.
This is very common among cities our size, then.
Right. $600,000, while it seems like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money in the world of public improvements, it does not go as far as it used to. So this is a really common practice.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Craig.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 14, West Lyon Street, North Third Street Reconstruction Project. The consideration would be to accept a proposal for consultant services. Prior to our meeting, I believe the Public Improvement and Transportation Committee also met and reviewed the proposals and is ready to make a recommendation. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a brief background here just to start us off. This is a project that's been identified on our CIP for construction in 2023. It includes Lyon, Third Street from Main to Redwood and Lyon from College to Fifth. We had been approached by a majority property owner on Third Street about interest in the city reviewing some options and alternatives on the projects specifically related to streetscaping and then also related to the traffic signal at Third and Main. So upon our cursory review of the request, we determined that we needed to seek some proposals for some outside services. So very, in very short order, our Assistant City Engineer, Jesse Dean, put together an RFP, got it sent out and advertised and turned around very, very quickly, and we received three RFPs for, for the whole scope of work. We split the project out into four tasks. Task one is an intersection control evaluation at Main and Third. That's what you would need to do to determine if the signal should stay or go, or what alternatives could be considered. Tasks two and three are related to streetscaping. Task two is a kind of a scoping and public informational piece where you determine what our options are. Task three is a design of streetscaping improvements. Task four is a design of the rest of the project, the entire design, if we were to choose to elect to just hire the consultant to do the entire project design. So we worked with the PIT Committee to review the proposals, as well as Jesse Dean and Jeff Stelter in our engineering department and Brad Gruhat from the chamber. So we're really appreciative of all those folks for doing a review in a really short period of time, because we received these last week on Thursday, and they were met and discussed today. So appreciate that. At the meeting today, there was a lot of really good discussion, and I think I'll leave some of that for the PIT Committee. But the, the recommendation was to accept the proposal of Bolton and Mink for tasks one, two, and three, and leaving task four, which is the, the majority design of the project to city staff. So I'll pause for more comment.
Okay. Any input from the Public Improvement Transportation?
I'll just, I'll start out, and then Jim can, can add in here. So yeah, we did have a really good meeting, good discussion. I know that there's been a lot of concern. We've, we've heard about the, the traffic control, whether it should go or whether it should stay. And we really can't make any decisions, and MINDOT won't accept anything without the study. They do split the cost with us for that study. And the final, whether we accept a request is really kind of up to us. Now, MINDOT would have the ability, it's their signal. If they wanted to take it out, they, they could, but I don't think they would without agreement from us. So this isn't making the decision whether it goes or stays, it's gathering the information so that we can make a decision that makes sense, and that's also in agreement with input from the community, especially the Main Street business people. So I think it's good. The, there's enough concern that the recommendation forward to the council to move forward and approve this and, and accept the proposals for the, for the services was a two-to-one vote. There was one opposed to, to doing that. And I want to just make sure that I bring those forward. Part of that concern was that for 30 years of, of his knowledge and experience on, on the Main Street Business Association and as a business operator on Main Street, very concerned about removing the signal. If the signal comes out, it never will come back, and, and I think that's a true and honest statement. Whether the semi-four is the best control of traffic or pedestrian there, I think that remains to be seen, and I think that's part of what the study should show. But that was the concern, and I, and there was input from public. I took some input from public that was opposed to removing the light. I didn't have anybody come in and tell me that they really think the light should go, although personally, for my own personal reasons, I would prefer to see a pedestrian control piece there that's triggered by an actual person wanting to, to cross the, the Main Street. But I'll just, that, that's my own personal opinion. I received input from others that was completely opposed to my opinion, so I guess we're all kind of out there. That's really, Jim, what do you, anything you want to add?
Thank you, Craig. Jim?
I just add that we, we have to do the study to even have the discussion.
Yep.
Because according to, and I'm throwing it to us, according to Jason, if we don't do the study, there's no discussion with the state on the light. So we need to do the study. We need to spend the $12,000, $6,000 share to do this study. And tasks two and three are the design of the landscaping, which has been brought forward by the, one of the majority owners along Third Street. So, and he's, and we again have to do the study to see what the costs are going to be to go forward to this, so we have to do that. We did have discussion at PINT, and Craig did touch on this, is we're going to separate out, our recommendation from PINT is to separate out tasks. out, our recommendation with PIT is to separate out task four and have that done in-house by our own engineering department.
Right.
So the recommendation for PIT, we're actually to award tasks one, two, and three, then we keep task four in-house.
Right.
And again, it was two-to-one. And I know Russ is, I think Russ is concerned with the light, but and I think we need to have further discussion on that. But we need to have the study to even carry that discussion forward.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or input? John?
Yeah, I just, kind of listening to this, what you're really saying is that the study could indeed solidify the fact that it needs a light there.
Correct. It could.
I mean, so there's, it's not a study to, can we remove it? It's a study, how necessary is it? And it could just as easily come back saying it's, it is really required to be there for the safety, which I think is
Right.
the concern of a number of people that have expressed it.
So. Because there's a number of things in the potentials of what could happen with that intersection, if it's right turns only, if it's one-way, if it's two-way. And those would all be weighed out in there. And then what is the safest option? It's not, you know, is the light better? It's just what would work best and what's the safest? And that's their goal. They're not going to put something in just because it's cheaper. They're going to put it in or recommend it because it's the safest option.
Yeah. Any other? John?
Just addition on there is as far as looking back, engineering, as far as taking on task four, that you're in agreement with that?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. We made it clear to the committee that we had intended always to do that task, to do that work. We put that in there in case we were surprised by the number. And we wanted to have that option in case it was really advantageous to the city. We do think we could do it for a better price than that internally. We've kind of put our own numbers to it. The benefit of having them do it would be that we could start to work ahead on our CIP, because we're always trying to get a year ahead or even two years ahead of design on our projects. We are absolutely not there, but you know, with Jesse's lead and Jeff Stelter's work, we've gone, and Jared Lee, we've got a lot of people working on that, and we're getting ahead, but we're just not quite there. It's really hard to get ahead. If we consulted with them on task four, it would really help us do that. But I think for our recommendation, we always intended to do it. I would say we could, we could do it for less, so.
And the PIT did spend, and actually, a fair amount of time discussing that back and forth with the engineering department staff to find out, you know, would it really be a benefit, you know, for the additional cost? Would it help them that much to do that? And they, they're really strong on, they feel that it would be the best interest of the city to keep it in-house. And I think we agree with that.
Good. Any other input? If not, the recommendation from the committee is that the award for tasks one, two, and three, as outlined, be awarded to Bolton and Mink?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig.
Could I interject before you vote?
Sure.
Sorry. I see an underline that was important to me, and I forgot to bring it up. The cost in the recommendation is approximate. I just want to point that out. It was made clear that if we do not award task four, there's a approximate 25% adder to their tasks two and three. So this number includes our idea of what their approximate adder will be. It may be give or take. It should be close.
And the justification, just to kind of drill into that a little bit more, is that if they're doing the final plans and specs, if there's changes in the pedestrian pathway and they're doing, they're doing item four also, transferring and doing those changes in-house would be easier for them, where if we're doing the final plans as the city with our staff, there's a little bit more communication. So there'd be a little bit more time and effort by their staff linking with ours. But Jason and them did a good job of extrapolating an estimate of what that would cost, and that is the number that's included in the proposal.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports from my part. The Southwest Regional Development Commission will meet this Thursday. Craig?
Airport Commission met last week, and we've worked on the major items of concern there. I don't think there's anything else really important that we bring forward. Do you think, Jason?
CIP update, but it was going to be something we can come back and revisit. There's a federal requirement to have the
Oh, that's right.
BIL Act law funds put into our CIP, and they require it by April 1st. We are just not ready to act through our Airport Commission and Council on that. So we're going to authorize TKDA to tweak our airport CIP, and we'll bring it back for ratification and approval.
Right.
Councilmember Meister is absent this evening. Councilmember Don Edgeloom's assignments had included the Housing Commission as liaison. I've asked, and John DeCramer has agreed, to be the interim liaison to the Housing Commission. Don was also responsible for the Planning Commission liaison, as well as the Comprehensive Plan Liaison. And I will take those roles on myself. The other role that Don had was Equipment Review Committee. I visited with Jason, and he does not anticipate that there's going to be an upcoming meeting. So we'll just leave that one open, and then if we need to meet, then we'll discuss it at that time. John?
As far, okay, as far as my committees, Marshall Municipal Utilities met on Thursday the 24th. One major item of notation is, it was the final pay request for the water treatment plant enhancement project. So that project is complete. There were three change orders on the project, but yet with that, it still came in under budget, so, or on budget. So it turned out very well that way. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission also met on March 2nd. Number of discussions there, one being a welcome week, which we had last year, is, will be coming up again. So the council will be asked, or Mayor will be asked to declare a resolution stating it's a welcome week, similar to last year. That's coming up in middle of September. I think, I want to say September 9th is probably the first day of it. It goes on for a week. That's being reviewed right now as far as the city of Marshall. That's the suggested week. So we coordinate with a number of other communities. But there may be some other things interfering with that. And we hit quite a busy weekend last year when we had it. It was Pursuit of Excellence. It had a major game out at SMSU. So we're trying to see what those schedules are and try to miss that. Along with that, it was time of the year for reelection of officers. Earlier, we had changed, we have co-chairs for the committee and made a change in the co-chairs so that rather than both of them switching off at the same time, they, on a two-year term, they would stagger their terms. And so each year, we'd have an election for a new co-chair. This time, Jay Lee or Jefferson Lee decided to drop out of the co-chair and have an election of a new co-chair. He's got other projects that he needs to spend time on, and so wish to thank him for his activity that he did put in. He put in a lot of time on the, getting the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission up and running. So in his place, Michelle Neif Sterner is elected as the other co-chair, along with Joyce Tuft as the present chair that will rotate again the next year. So I think that's it. Thank you.
EDA did not meet since, so. Jim?
Mine did not meet.
Okay. We'll move then to Councilmember Individual Items. Craig?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
John?
The only item I'd bring up is kind of a word out there for the public to watch things going, going down Burt Street and round in that area. There's times in the evening, about this time of the day, when it starts getting a little dark, there's as many as 18 to 20 deer that are out walking across the road from the cemetery area out into the church area and some of the other gardens and trees and brush that are all around in there that are foraging for some food. So gets to be quite a herd that can at times go across that road. And it's a stretch where there's not a lot of stopping or driveways, so sometimes they can, cars can pick up some speed in there. So I might be surprised with a herd of deer running across about that time. So just to put that warning out there.
Thank you, John. Jim?
The only thing I have, I got a couple of things. But last week, I was up in the Twin Cities office with Bob and Sharon for Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. It was the first time I'd ever been involved in something like that, and I let them elaborate more because I was learning more than anything. It was just interesting to watch how the wheels of government work up in that level. Dennis is just smiling over there. It was interesting. I will let both Bob or Sharon elaborate more on that, because they're, they've done that more than I have, I was learning. The other thing I want to bring up is, as we talk about our pool and amenities, I think it's very important that we get that amenity through. And I just use the example of, you know, I was, I went bowling Friday night, which was obviously not in Marshall, which is amenity we don't have anymore. And we can't let those amenities go away, because once they're gone, they're hard to come back. I just thought of that when I was bowling Friday night. I was like, boy, it'd be nice to have a bowling alley in Marshall. Obviously, we'll probably never get one back. But you know, it's the same thing with our pool. We need to do something with our pool, because once it's gone, it's going to be very expensive to get it back. So, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, and thank you for attending the Legislative Day of Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. There, there will be other opportunities too for legislative visits, and there's important work that the legislature is doing that impacts the city of Marshall. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which we are members, they have a fairly short list of issues that are important, and of course, we address those all the way from workforce housing to other issues affecting greater Minnesota cities. We had a couple of specific issues to this region that we had individual discussions on. And I'll talk first about, on behalf of the Southwest Minnesota Council of Mayors, which we formed late last year. It was really formed by initially the communities of Marshall Pipestone, Laverne, and Worthington, and now it has expanded beyond there. But it's really focused on issues that we all have in common. And one of those issues is economic competitiveness with our neighboring states. And there's a number of things that we're advancing and to address that competitiveness issues. And we've had discussions with Commissioner Steve Groves, Minnesota Deed Commissioner, as well as others. One specific issue, though, that we are advancing has to do with workforce development and training. And the concept was on targeted occupations that are hard to fill, and those occupations where there is the capacity in Minnesota West Community and Technical College campuses in the region, that we should capitalize on both of those things and match a program that is available in South Dakota called Build South Dakota, where basically there's tuition forgiveness if the participant in that curriculum stays and works in that state for a period of three years. We modeled that, and of course, in South Dakota, that is not a legislative authorized program. It's funded by benefactors, I'll say, and specifically a primary benefactor that they have available. In our case, we probably don't have that opportunity. So what we are proposing is that we model that program for Southwest Minnesota, and we have proposed that to our legislators and to Deed and to Minnesota West, and have received great support. And in fact, Senator Weber and Representative Hamilton are, will be sponsoring the bills, and I believe the first hearings now is scheduled. So, so that's, that's a good thing, and that will be good for the region. And it's really offered as a five-year program and as a pilot program, and likely would expand if it's successful, which I'm sure it will be. Secondly, I'll talk about the, our sales tax extension proposal, and Sharon, you can fill in details too. As we all know, this has been under discussion for, as an option for replacement of our current Aquatic Center, which was built in 1937, at least 12,000 gallons of water a day. It is in need of replacement. It is a regional asset, and it is a community asset. And as we all know, that of the options looked at to finance this, one of the options that was preferred is, the majority of it would be financed with a, through an extension of the local option sales tax. And earlier this year, the council passed a resolution unanimously requesting the legislature to grant authorization to go for a public vote that would authorize the local option sales tax. That resolution involved two, two items that, based on input from the legislators, the indoor recreation center was removed from the proposed, the proposal. So it now would be only the Aquatic Center. So there was a, so that was discussed with both Senator Dames and with Representative Swazinski. And then earlier today, Sharon and I met by Zoom with Senator Weber to discuss and explain this. Tomorrow, there is a hearing of the Subcommittee of the House Tax Committee that I and then Sharon will correct anything I say improperly, will provide testimony. So that is tomorrow afternoon. So the, the proposed bill that is both in the House, introduced by Senator Dames and in the, or excuse me, in the House as introduced by Representative Swazinski, and in the Senate as introduced by Senator Dames, is for funding of this project up to a maximum of $16 million, recognizing that we likely would have that amount reduced by sourcing of other funds, and that it would be financed with a local option sales tax, and that that would be the question that would go to the voters in, in the next general election in November. There was a discussion about, is this the, are there alternatives to this? And Representative Swazinski had advanced the idea that, you know, perhaps a portion of this would be revenue shared with communities in the region, recognizing that, you know, while this is a regional asset, the funds are also contributed by, you know, people in the city of Marshall and people outside of the city of Marshall. The disadvantage of that is that it would extend the life of the sales tax collection, it would increase the amount of interest cost of that. But the most important, and this really came out in a meeting yesterday by Zoom with Representative Swazinski and the Chair and Vice Chair of the committee that will be testifying at tomorrow, is that the mechanism really isn't in place to authorize that. The statute is fairly clear about, you know, local option sales tax are used for specific regional projects, and it's really not available to just distribute it out to, to other entities without a specific source. So, so you know, that's, that's part of the discussion, but know that the introduction is for the straightforward bill. Let me pause for a second, and Sharon, you may want to add something. And then I'd also, you know, if any council member has input under, you know, on that issue, because that's an important issue, you know, we should discuss that. Sharon, anything to add?
You're probably getting to this, but I do think it would be good to hear from the council, their thoughts on revenue sharing. And certainly, I can share some of the points or complications on revenue sharing. The one example is Rochester and The one example is Rochester and I believe the discussions from Representative Swazinski does not really match Rochester at all. In addition to the fact that Rochester's annual sales tax is about 12 million in comparison to, or 1.5. But I, I do think it would be important to hear from the other council members. We may get asked tomorrow in a committee hearing, how does the council feel about revenue sharing? In the event that Representative Swazinski offers an amendment, which he has mentioned, and I know he's communicated with me some occasionally here in the last week or two about support for revenue sharing. And we've been kind of saying we're not sure the council would support that. So again, I was thinking you were getting to that. I'll, I am interested in knowing how you feel about that.
So let's open it up. Craig?
Yeah, it's just, I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on it. I, I thinking it over, I'm not real crazy about the revenue sharing. First of all, it's not what we put out in the, in the conversations to our, to our voters when we did the community survey. We haven't talked about it. This is really the first piece that, you know, that it's come out. And then thinking about it too, so we're collecting an extra half a cent in Marshall and there's a number of businesses that we have in Marshall that have competitors in these communities that we would be then dispersing funds to that don't collect that half a cent, but yet would still reap a benefit from that. So it actually puts our businesses at an additional disadvantage. The biggest problem I have, I think, is just the credibility of the council as we represented this when we went into the community. We spent a lot of effort and money doing the community survey and we never discussed revenue sharing. And I, I question whether, again, because it's not to a specific project, leaving the community, we know where it's going in Marshall and that's what we proposed to an aquatic center. We were advised to not leave the indoor activity center in because we couldn't flush out what that project was. Well, now if we're going to take a percentage of these funds and distribute them in revenue sharing, there's no benchmark at all of where those funds would go. And I think that's really inappropriate and I think it's disingenuous to our voters to do that.
John or Jim?
I agree with Craig is with the indoor rec removed, you're correct, Craig. We'd exactly know where that money is going. And it's hard to ask our businesses to raise sales tax, like you said, Craig, to send the communities where their businesses don't have to raise the sales tax.
I guess my thought, I'm thinking about kind of the logic of this and I haven't quite seen why, you know, the, you know, the discussion we've had here in council is that, you know, this is an asset for the community, but it's also, is made use of quite a bit by the region. We get, you know, people coming in from other communities coming in to swim up the aquatic center. And that was part of the reason or logic for going with a sales tax is because we're able to capture some revenue from, you know, those outside communities coming in and purchasing here that could go towards the aquatic center. Now the discussion is, okay, we take and turn around and give that back. It's just, it seems counter to what we're trying to accomplish with the whole thing. So I don't think I'd go along with that. It just doesn't seem to make sense.
I would add just one, one item, you know, the, the legislation as is proposed to go to the voter, the public is for an extension of the current tax. It's not a, a increase in the tax. It's simply a, an extension at the current level. So we've, as part of the legislation, we've also asked, because in current statute, there would be a one-year, one-year period of time between the, the completion of the, of the collection of the current tax and the implementation of the new tax. And we've asked that that one year really be eliminated so that our retailers don't have to reset their cash registers and then a year later reset them again and lower and then raise. And so I believe that's the input that we had unless anybody else need more to add.
Well, the only thing I'd like to add too is I know that part of the concern is some folks not living in the city of Marshall have to pay taxes on large property purchases. Let's say you're building a house out in Gant, Minnesota. The sales tax is point of possession. And I think, I know I mentioned it to you, John, and you didn't realize that. So if you're buying a large purchase and you don't live in the city of Marshall and it's delivered to your property, you pay sales tax at point of possession. So it is not as bad as folks think it is when it comes down to that. And I think that needs to be clear to the people out in the county. It's point of possession on this stuff. So the folks in the county aren't getting hit as hard as they think they are.
Okay. So that's all I had for individual items. So we'll move then to agenda item number 17, staff report. Sharon?
I think the sales tax legislation, the work being done on that has taken up most of my time and then just preparing for state of the city. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. You'll have time after this is, we're adjourning a bit early this evening, so you'll have time to do some.
Whatever, whatever you want me to do.
You guys took a chance to read the
Mr. Mayor, are you two going to rehearse then? Is that what?
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Just give the council an update that we have heard that we will be awarded a bike trail grant for the trail we applied for on Lyon from Jewett to Maine. The award was in the amount of $455,704. That leaves a local match of, or a local requirement of $287,696. So I imagine at a point in the future here, we'll be coming forward to the council to talk about that and see if we'll be accepting that.
Sorry, this is three years out, right?
2026, is that correct, Jesse? Yeah, 2026.
So we have time to think about this.
We do, we do. I imagine we'll have to accept it a little sooner, but we definitely have time to get our ducks in a row and our financial house in order. So also heard that the chloride grant agreement has been executed between Bolton and Mink and the MPCA. So we will meet with them soon to start that discussion of how we're going to use the funds. You may remember that's a $31,000 contribution to receive $100,000 in actionable funds. We're splitting that cost with MMU, so the wastewater fund's responsible for less than 16,000. So that's a good deal. We'll work on that with an aim for some form of rebate program for doing software adjustments. We'll see how we can shape that, but we'll be in contact with the council. Slight amendment to the College Drive project in 2025. I received word today that it's extremely likely that Bruce Street will be included in that project. They're still kind of finishing up that and I, I think part of that piece is seeing if they need to come back to you to make any sort of, give any approvals. So, and I think they do. Another thing with that project, they're going to be applying for a federal raise grant for the project. So they will be asking us and you for some letters of support. So I'll be bringing those forward in the coming weeks. With the RFP authorized tonight, Jesse will get in contact with Bolton and Mink right away, I'm assuming. And I think we'd just like to remind you that there will be public input sessions as a part of that, as we look to gather information about what folks want to see. So we'll look for those and we'll, we'll keep the council abreast of that as well. Lastly, a couple more MinDOT items. A Street to G Street along 59 is identified for a thin overlay in 2024. So they'll do some more patching until then and then they'll give it a thin overlay as they look to buy some time for reconstruction. It sounds like they are looking to try to fit in a reconstruction on that project. I heard 2033 tossed around with the ability to potentially slide it up. So maybe some hope that sometime in the 2020s, we'll get a reconstruct there. But they have funding constraints like the rest of us. So we're just happy that they, they are identifying the problem and scheduling improvements. The diamond grinding that was supposed to happen this year from 23 to County Road 6 on US 59 is also in 2024. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just a few updates. Block 11, you acted on some items tonight with Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The pushing paper continues on that project. There'll be more coming forward in April on the tax increment financing. Documents have been sent out to the National Guard regarding the transfer of the property on Commerce Park. Helena, I spoke to the Department of Ag today. They received a work plan from the environmental consultant. They believe that that is a statement from Helena that they want to stay in the voluntary cleanup program. They're, they're seeking further clarification on that, but they did receive a timely work order, which I think continues in the volunteer cleanup. North 7th Street annexation of the property where the solar field will go in. MRES attorney has some questions and he and I have to make contact this week about that. And then I believe we're also, we'd also like to reconvene a PINT meeting to discuss annexation thoughts in that general area. And then I know council members have received some complaints on some nuisance property, nuisance properties on East Main Street. I've been in contact with those property owners. One of the property owners, his family is seeking guardianship, so would give them some authority. They hope to take some action, hoping to sell property, but I'm, I'm not sure it's in a sellable condition. And I've also spoken to Empire Realty on one of their properties on East Main Street as well. And we're looking at a May 1 time for them, but I mean, we're not being kept in the dark anymore. There's communication going on, so we are making progress. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any question for Dennis?
I gotta back up just a second. One thing I neglected, I'll inform the council that I have, you know, sent a letter, I've been in communication with our congressional offices regarding the, the census issue that we discussed earlier. And while, you know, we're proceeding with the census appeal, the census appeal never anticipated a pandemic affecting a community that hosts a university on Census Day. So it just doesn't fit. So we've asked in a letter, I've asked Senator Klobuchar, Senator Smith, and Representative Fishbach for their help and intervention in, in helping us. I think we have a fairly straightforward, obvious argument. It's just that that argument maybe doesn't fit within the appeal structure that the Census Bureau has, so we're going to need their help. With that, you have the information items. You have the administrative brief for your review. And I'll take us then to agenda item number 22, which is to consider going to closed session to engage in attorney-client privilege discussion regarding Broadmoor Valley. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes.